Good afternoon, everyone. It's 5:00. On Tuesday, December 2, 2025, I would like to call to order the meeting of the St. Croix County Board of Supervisors. And we will begin with our invocation. Tim Sackin? Tim? Welcome back.
Thank you for having me back. I don't have my record straight, but I think I might have been the January invocation, so I get to close this year off. So if you've had, whatever kind of year you've had, I started and I'm going to end, and I have nothing to do with anything in between. So such a privilege to be here. And the thoughts of why an invocation is part of the program is that it goes back centuries when all kinds of elected bodies in this nation have asked for spiritual renewal and God's provision and providence and over the affairs of this nation. And it came to my attention a while ago that at the beginning of World War I and at the beginning of World War II, both Presidents Wilson and Roosevelt, when the military issued Bibles to the troops, the Presidents put a note in the front of the Bible. And the one that Woodrow Wilson put in the note in the front of the Bible in 1917, he said that this Bible, "In this Bible is told the most convincing of human experiences that has ever been written. Those that heed that story will know that strength and happiness and success are all summed up in the exhortation to fear God and keep His commandments," written by Woodrow Wilson in 1917. And it's an encouragement to us as a people, as a nation, as citizens, that leaders take interest in all that these elected bodies, including yours, always look for ways to provide for the people, things like education and safety and commerce and just the general welfare. But also, by these things, the spiritual renewal of our nation, of our people. Let's pray. Lord God in heaven, we are coming up on a season that we know in the Church is called Advent. And it's a spiritual renewal annually to remind us of your greatest gift to all the people of the earth was your Son, Jesus. And so in this Advent, in this season, I pray that there would be an awareness of the good things that you've done for all mankind. Lord, we pray for this day, this evening, as these men and women of this board will sit and hear and discuss important decisions about the people who live in St. Croix County and look for ways in which all these things, like the general welfare and the commerce and the safety and the things that this county needs from them, that they would have great discussions and make great decisions to provide for the people of St. Croix County. And in the big picture of all things, may we be reminded of your presence with us in all these decisions. In Jesus' name we pray. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As for roll call, all supervisors are present with a couple of exceptions. I believe Supervisor Carlson was attempting to join us virtually. He has not joined yet. And Supervisor Adams is returning back from a long weekend. I think he will be trying to join us later, but I'm not quite sure. In person, yes. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to this next item, appointment of county board supervisor for District 2. And I'm going to start out and make some comments, if I may. Couple of things. First of all, I want to remind everyone that this is a nonpartisan board. In case some of us may have forgotten, it is a nonpartisan board. So when I interview candidates for these vacancies, I don't ask them what their political persuasion is. I don't ask them how they're going to vote on issues because I don't believe that that should be a criteria for recommending or selecting to fill a vacant board seat. So I don't ask them. As a matter of fact, and I think Supervisor Rowan can agree with this, but I actually make a point to tell them that it's a nonpartisan board. And when they walk through that door, they should be leaving their politics and their ego at the door. That would be the best thing that we could do. So I don't go down that road because I don't think it's appropriate. So I did not go down that road in District 8, 10, or 2. The things that I look for when I'm interviewing candidates, and I hope you would agree, are things like integrity, character, honesty, sincerity, commitment to serve. Those are the things that I look for in candidates when they're interested in serving on this board. I'm not interested in their political leanings. Unfortunately, this particular recommendation has become rather politicized and rather contentious, which I'm extremely disappointed at. And I'm actually a little embarrassed at it. I don't think it's a good reflection of this board. And I think that we are better than that. But given the contention of the recommendation, at this time, I am withdrawing my recommendation for District 2. And I will not be making another recommendation to replace District 2 supervisor. So that seat will be vacant until the election in April, when the residents of District 2 can then voice their opinion and decide who is best to represent them. So with that, we're going to move on to public comment.
Chair, if I might. Supervisor Carlson has signed in through the voting system, but he has not signed into the Teams meeting. So Supervisor Carlson, if you're watching at home, if you could join the Teams meeting, link that Corporation Counsel Heather Amos has sent you, and then we would see you on the screen. Thank you.
Okay, public comment. I do not believe I received any public comment cards. So is anyone would like to address the board tonight? Yes, this young lady right here. And we will do our customary three minutes, but... No, that's okay. Just make sure you tell us who you are and where you live.
Okay, my name is Janet Scepurik, S-C-E-P-U-R-K. And I live in Baldwin Village. I was driving on T near G when the red logo of an Excel truck caught my eye. That's St. Croix Electric territory. Looks like they are moving in and taking over already, although they don't have permission. Feels to me like my adverse possession lawsuit. My neighbors bragged that they had trespassed, so therefore they owned it. My lawyer called it legalized stealing. But you know what? It costs way too much money, but I don't regret standing up to them. In fact, I'm glad I did. Because if I didn't, I'd regret it and be angry at myself. I'd rather be angry at them. I did a lot of soul searching during the lawsuit. There's lots of verses how to treat neighbors, but I couldn't find any to justify them stealing. I surmised that the leaseholders for the solar project signed up for selfish monetary reasons without considering how it hurts their neighbors. How do you feel when someone makes a business decision that costs your property values? In Forest, we were unsellable and on the verge of unlivable. I feel so bad for these people to have a predator moving in who showed up unwanted and unwelcome. There's no good reason to take superb farmland when covering a parking lot would do the job nicely. Tonight, we have a 112-page color presentation, "How the Majority of Respondents Favor Retain Lands for Protection of Scenic Threatened and Environmentally Sensitive Areas." I don't care about making the parks pretty for tourists. I won't even go myself. But I do care about a big, major devastation slated to destroy the middle of the county while you make it pretty around the edges. It is ironic to focus on these park areas, which are already pretty nice. Those other threatened areas deserve county protection also. So let's do both. If you approve this park plan to protect threatened areas, it also makes sense to approve protecting another large part of the county under threat. Why on earth are we going to hear someone Excel chose? I will be very skeptical. I Googled terracotta lawsuits and found several alleging negligence, foundation settling, breach of contract, violations of North American Electric Reliability Corporation. Excel has way more lawsuits. They brag. They are working on 25 lawsuits from the Smokehouse Creek fire and have expedited 151 of 225 other claims from that fire, plus paid $640 million to Marshall Fire victims. They settled on the eve of a jury trial. And that represents only half of the individuals who sued for that one fire. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment?
Hi there. My name is Laura Conard, and I'm a resident of Aaron Prairie Township. And in light of it being Thanksgiving week, I'm just here to wish you Happy Thanksgiving and thank you for your work that you have done. You've seen a lot of me over the past year, sometimes good, sometimes not so good. But I do appreciate all the work that you are doing. I had a different comment that I wished to share this evening in light of what Chair Long talked about. I'm not making that comment, but as part of that one, I did want to thank you. So thank you for the work and the service you do. I know it's a thankless job, but you are appreciated even when we don't necessarily agree with what or how you do things.
Thank you. Other comments? Any other public comment? Other public comment? Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Does anyone have anything in the consent agenda that they would like to pull out? Seeing none, do we have a motion on the consent agenda? Supervisor Burning, that was a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
And second?
Second.
Second, Supervisor Lind. And that passes 16 to 0 and one abstention. Okay, we're going to move on to our presentations. We have two of them tonight. We're going to start out with our St. Croix Economic Development Corporation Housing Study Presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Melissa Meshky. I'm the Executive Director of St. Croix Economic Development Corporation. I'm a private nonprofit that does economic development for all of St. Croix County. You guys have been long supporters of the EDC, and you were also supporters of this housing study. So first off, thank you again for the support for the housing study. Tonight, I'm going to go through some very brief highlights. This is usually about an hour-long presentation. So I shortened it to about 10 to 15 minutes, and then we can open it up for questions. But all of the information is available on our website. You can download the full study as well as all the supplemental documents off of the website. So do I do it? That wasn't the right one. Okay. So this housing study was a community effort. We worked with municipalities as well as the county and private organizations to fund this plan. So on this screen, you'll see all of the funders of the housing study that was completed. So a public thank you to all of our supporters for the housing study. This wouldn't have been possible without their support of this. Now I did it, and I'm not supposed to. So we're going to go over the key findings of this housing study. The first one that I'll start with is the county population. It has increased and is projected to continue to grow. You're going to see three different colored lines on the screen. The green line is the actual population over the years since 1950 to the current census of 2020. The DOJ creates population projections, I'm sure you all are aware, that are done every 10 years, kind of on the off-cycle of the census. In 2014, the DOA had projected a population quite a bit larger than what has transpired. So that's the blue line, the really high line. The orange line is the revised projections that they released just last year in 2024. So for the purpose of this study, we did go with the new updated population targets for that DOA.
And I might just throw out my disclaimer on that one, that their 2024 population estimate for 2025 is below 100,000, but the DOA gave us our actual estimate, which is over 100,000. So they create two different models.
And we tried to create two different models throughout the plan. So if you go on and look at the actual document, it's about 300 pages. You're going to find some information based on those population estimates. I think I missed a slide, actually. So I'm going to go back. Sorry. Then we'll go back into the data. But for the purpose of the housing study, a big focus that came out of it was affordable housing. So I wanted to define what affordable was. A lot of people have self definitions of that, but we did create a formal definition for this plan. Affordable or attainable housing is housing that a household can afford without being housing cost burdened. And the definition of housing cost burden is not spending more than 30% of your income on rent or mortgage, insurance, and utilities. So now back to the data. The other key point that we went over at length in the housing study is the county's population is aging. We're not aging as quickly as some of our other neighboring counties, but it is still occurring here in St. Croix County. And the 65-plus age group is projected to increase by 86% by 2050. It's a pretty striking number, one we definitely need to pay attention to as we're working to attract folks into the area. We know that our current population is going to age quite dramatically. The county's average household size is also decreasing. This is not unique to St. Croix County. This is really happening all over the United States. A lot of factors. We're aging in place a lot longer. People are having less kids. Those are the two main drivers. But the average household size is projected to be just above 2.4 persons per household by 2050. So either a traditional house with, you know, a couple with four children, you don't see that a ton anymore, and that's reflected in the data. What this does is increase the need for housing stock. So even though we have an aging population and we have less kids being born, we still need more houses because folks are staying in those houses with less people. Housing costs are also increasing much faster than household incomes. The median sale price for homes from just 2020 to 2024, so the last four years, increased 35%. And that median rent for two-bedroom unit has increased 34%. So those unit prices stand right around $381,000 for a home sale and $1,700, almost $1,800 for a median two-bedroom rent. Housing costs have increased, obviously, at a much higher rate than household incomes. I don't think too many people saw a 35% pay increase in four years. There is a lack of available housing stock. So these numbers are based on 2023. That's the most recent data that we were able to pull for the housing studies. So the rental vacancy in 2023 was only 1.4%. A healthy vacancy is 5.5% to 7%. So quite a bit short of that vacancy. I would say in the last few years, we have addressed that some. We have had quite a few rental units come online, and that's reflected in some of the more detailed data in the housing study itself. Owner vacancy in 2023 was technically 0%. It doesn't mean that there wasn't any. It just meant that things didn't stay on the market very long. That's pretty much still the case. If you look on Zillow or Realtor.com, you're not going to see many houses for sale. The creation of new lots and housing production within the county dropped off dramatically after 2008. A lot of people think that the housing crisis was really kicked off by, you know, the crisis in 2020, but it started quite a long time before that. The pandemic accelerated it. But this really did start back after the economic crash in 2008. Builders just weren't building. So the different lines that you see are the subdivision plots, the building permits, and single-family permits and the multifamily permits. So you can see that dramatic drop, and we haven't come anywhere near coming back to that housing stock creation that we had pre-crash. Of all of the data in the study, this is my absolute favorite slide. I think it's the one that's the most impactful when we think about affordable housing. So when you look at this, this is the most common, the common jobs in St. Croix County by count. So these might be part-time jobs. These might be full-time jobs. These folks might have more than one job, but these are the most popular jobs by count in St. Croix County. The next column over is the median hourly earnings of those folks, followed by the median annual earnings. On the far right-hand side is that housing cost affordability, that 30% to avoid being housing cost burdened. When you look down that column, you'll notice that a lot of those numbers don't match with the current rents and owner rates, you know, are going to go for here in St. Croix County. So the average two-bed being $1,800, a lot of the stuff that's coming online now is $1,800 for a two-bed. There's not too many people that can afford that. So I really think this chart is the most impactful of the entire study, although I encourage you to read the whole study. If you don't walk away with anything else, I think this one's really impactful. So what are the key findings? How many units do we need? This study didn't break it down between workforce housing, senior housing, different types of, you know, multifamily, twin homes versus row homes. It didn't get that detailed, but it did give us a number of units. So in the bottom right-hand corner, three columns up, or two columns up, you'll see the net increase that we need. So 4,300 to 4,600 new units by 2050. If you're confused about the 2025 column being zero, that's just because it's where we started. It doesn't mean we don't need any units in 2025. It just, that was the zero point of the study. So you can see the rates that units need to be produced over the next couple of years to meet that demand. Another thing I will point out is a lot of folks talk about, you know, how do we avoid overbuilding? These are not permanent figures. We need to be adjusting these and watching these through the years to make sure that we're meeting what we think we need to meet is actually what we need to meet. But we did consider, you know, folks aging in houses longer, but still, the boomers are going to be leaving the population. So that does allow for more housing stock. But we have aging housing stock coming offline, and we took all those factors in. So when you look at that 4,300 to 4,600, that's really what we're looking for. Just the projects that I'm involved in right now, I'm looking at about 1,000 units, you know, that I'm actively involved with. I'm sure that there's more just here in 2025 as new projects. So we're making progress. I like to see it. Where I hope that there's more movement is with affordable housing. A lot of market rate things coming online, but really trying to work on affordable housing. So what are the recommendations? We do have quite a few more in the actual housing studies. So if you pull up the document, you're going to see more than what's listed here. But we divided it up between county-level initiatives, municipal-level initiatives, employer and community partner, builder and development. And then we really identified those top four priority things for the EDC, so for my group to address. So that St. Croix County Housing Task Force, that's going to be a group that'll be managed by the EDC, you know, lots of different community partners that are interested in housing. I haven't actually started the task force yet, but I have lots of people that are interested. So that'll be a great thing for the county to, not the St. Croix County as a county, but working as a county collectively with our community partners. Also looking at residential infill sites. The benefit of infill sites is there's already utilities there, so development is quite a bit more affordable. Also really doing a lot of education around TIF. If you follow that at the state level, they're working on a housing-specific TID. They're also working on increasing the TID cap. Lots of things going on with TIF. Not seeing a lot of projects, especially in the multifamily view, that are able to move forward without TIF. So seeing that in a lot of applications for multifamily. And then educate people on wage and income levels. So that very favorite chart that I have, making sure that we're sharing that throughout all of our partners and municipalities, individual businesses, realtors, different people I've been giving presentations to. So that is my slides. If you head to our website, stcroixcounty, or stcroixedc.com/housing-study, you can find all the documents. So the full housing study is available for download there. The other thing you're going to see is municipal snapshots. So 21 of our 35 municipalities got one of those snapshots. So it really identifies individual communities and how many units they're short or, you know, what the demand is for there. Shows some population trends for those individual communities. So those are really helpful. The full housing study presentation, the hour-long one that I mentioned, is also on there. So if you're looking for some key highlights and want to dive a little bit deeper but don't want to read a 300-page document, you can check out the full housing study presentation there, too.
Questions? Supervisor Burning?
Thank you, Melissa, for being here. And then thank you for using the term affordable housing. I really appreciate that instead of the other one that I totally disdain. So when we're looking at like multifamily housing, you saw a sudden upswing in 2021 of multifamily development and a sudden downswing in single-family development. But that also is true from the 1950s to today. In the '50s, it was almost a 90% of all residential construction projects were single-family homes. Today, it's 68%, and that's a drastic swing in a 60-year period. Does the study, which I haven't read through the full, you know, 300-page study yet, do you guys look at what has caused that drastic downswing in single-family homes? Because in my opinion, and I know you and I have had conversations on this, the American dream is not living in apartment buildings and multifamily housing. It just isn't, and it never has been. And I know my children and kids their age, and they're all college-age or high school, just go, "We're never going to own a home if we go to school and we have debt coming out of there. We can't file bankruptcy on that, so we owe that forever." So what has changed between the 1950s, where it was almost a 90% single-development rate, to today, where we're building mass amounts of multifamily homes and stacking people on top of each other? So did your study address that or look at that at all?
So I would say that's really addressed in the cost portion of the housing study. There's several pages that break down the increase of costs over the years, especially the last several years. That cost has increased quite dramatically. I want to say it's 40% increase in cost to build just in four years. So that has really skyrocketed. Costs, and I think, you know, land costs are much more expensive than they were in the '50s, as we're all aware, and construction costs. So to build kind of that, you call them like entry-level homes or starter homes, is challenging for builders to even do. We did a lot of work with the Starter Home Project over in New Richmond, if you've been following that one. And really, when you break down the numbers, it is really difficult to get a house on the ground for less than like $325 and plus land. So the costs are really tremendous. And we've worked with, you know, can we explore modular housing, for example? That comes in about 30% less than stick build. So that's an option to put modular housing on a slab. Lot sizes is a big part of that, too. If we can lower those lot sizes, the builders will build smaller homes to fit the other requirements right with that. There's just not a lot of motivation. There's just not a lot of motivation to build smaller starter homes when you can keep selling the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home. So we do work with folks that are interested in affordable housing, and I'm hopeful that we'll make some progress on building some affordable houses and mixing those into housing, too, so you're not creating like a, you know, just an area with just affordable housing, right? So integrating them into different builds. But I would guess, and I think the housing study really points, that cost is a huge factor.
So then if you can back up also to your slide where it shows workforce requirements to, yeah, that one right there. This doesn't even include property tax, and then on top of it, property, property insurance or mortgage insurance, or, or even like PNC insurance, which has skyrocketed in the last five years.
Right.
And you can speculate as to why that's happened, but I think, I think we're looking...
I think PMI is included, because insurance was included in that thirty percent. So it's mortgage and mortgage or rent, insurance and utilities.
Okay. So regardless, I mean, we're still looking at pretty, pretty high costs as a percentage of income, and like you're looking at, you know, people talking about fifteen dollars an hour as a, as a minimum wage. I mean, that doesn't even cover a family health insurance plan anymore for an employer. So I think that the, and this is just my opinion, but I truly believe that it's, if we're just looking at it from a housing perspective and just the cost of housing, we're missing, we're missing what the real ramifications of what's causing this or the real, I guess, what's really causing, the root cause of why houses are unattainable for our younger generation. And I know if I had waited just one year, there's no way I would have bought my house.
Thank you.
Supervisor Rice?
Melissa, I would like to share with you, at the WCA, Wisconsin Counties Association Conference, there was a breakout session talking about this issue, and if you're open to it, I can share the PowerPoint slides. It doesn't do it justice. But perhaps one of the, the things that it uncovers, and it might go to Supervisor Burning's point, is we as consumers have different expectations. So I'm a product of the baby boom, not ashamed to say, divulged my age. In nineteen-fifty, the average US house was nine-hundred-and-eighty-three square feet. In nineteen-sixty, at the peak of the baby boom, it was twelve-hundred. And now builders won't even look at you if you want less than two-thousand. So that's part of it, and that was addressed in this presentation, where there are communities that came together and said, you know, some of these young families, they're, they're okay with not having twenty-eight-hundred. You know, kids can share a bedroom. It's, it's been done before. And so I'll share this with you, but it also speaks to the idea that some of the same wants of the more modest, whether you called it a starter home, also are needed by the aging population, who are not looking to maintain three-bedroom homes. The kids aren't coming home to sit in their theaters that they have in their basement that aren't being used. So it's, it's kind of a multi-prong expectation. But there are, in Jackson County, they did collaborate on some solutions that did include tax increment financing. So I'll share that with you. But on a related note, and I, I know Supervisor Burning was there, we were able to attend the presentation you did with Wisconsin Counties Association Forward Analytics, who talked about future projections and actually the decline in the workforce. So our increase in that dotted line, whichever one you want to take, was really coming with the over-sixty-five age, right? And that might have implications for what is affordable, so.
Yes, and you made a lot of good points, and a couple of those are addressed, addressed directly in the housing study. I would say definitely that size expectation and the quality expectation, you know, always putting granite in, for example. Those things came up when we did our interviews for the study, and that definitely has, had an effect, you know? And I agree, not everybody wants a twenty-three-hundred-square-foot home. And you brought up the aging population, looking to downside. That's addressed many times in the housing study, so well aware of that fact, too. So we are talking about workforce here on this chart, but that aging population is a big part of it as well. I'm really looking at those considerations. So I would love to see the slides. Thank you.
Other questions? Supervisor Vance Summeran.
Thank you, Chair. So if, first of all, low, low-cost housing is the buzzword, not only from you tonight, but if you listen to the news, and we get mostly Minnesota news, it's all over Minneapolis, St. Paul's, looking for low, low rent housing, low rent housing and low-cost housing. So if housing is not affordable, as you've said, someone is affording it, because houses are coming on the market and they're sold. Who is it, then, that's buying? I mean, I, I look at your workforce consideration slide, I don't see anyone there who could afford to buy one. So who is buying? Someone is.
Great question. So in the research that we did, a lot of it is fifty-five-plus, close to retirees. So they're empty nesters with no children, which creates a lot of implications for long-term sustainability as a county. So it's definitely something we're aware of and concerned. I have heard anecdotally many times, you know, almost-retired folks coming over and wanting to buy houses from Minnesota to Wisconsin, better taxes, lower cost, which it is expensive here, but it's more expensive there. They're coming in sometimes all cash, sight unseen, and beating out continually that market that we're trying to feed. So that is a challenge, and one we, you know, it's great that we're bringing more people in the county, but we also need to make sure we're bringing the right people into the county. So I always like to give the example of me. We need more me's in the county. I moved here in 2021. I have two young children, ages five and nine. My husband and I are both prime-age workers. We need more me's in this community. And if I would try, as, as Supervisor Burning said, if I tried to buy my house today, I wouldn't be able to, you know? We just got lucky with the timing. We came in 2021. So most of the people that we're attracting are that fifty-five-plus, and that's really obvious in the population slide, too. That's not only population that's here, that's population that we're bringing here.
Follow-up question. So I kind of agree, there are a lot of people here that maybe we don't want here. Okay. There are a number of people here that we may not want here, but it's really hard to keep them out. You know, that's the issue. And, and another follow-up is that is, okay, so we're talking about building affordable housing, but how long before that's unaffordable? And, you know, the, the second seller, the third seller, what are we doing to guard that? Or can't we guard that? Is it just you climb to the top of the ladder and then you die?
Well, I can address both of those. So yes, we are building housing, but a lot of that housing is being filled by Minnesotans. And what happens is we don't get then the natural shifting that comes along. So those vacancy rates that I talked about, we're not creating more vacancy housing. So someone might be downsizing, but they're coming from Minnesota. They're not releasing a house here in St. Croix County. So it, it is a continual effect on, on our stock, on our housing stock. So yes, and no, we can't prevent them from coming here. The BB loss that was built in downtown New Richmond, it's a fifty-five-plus, income-constrained apartment complex. I believe the status, seventy percent of those were Minnesotans. So we create great housing, affordable housing, and then it fills with other folks. So it is a continual challenge. I don't expect it to change. It's something that we're very aware of and something we talk about a lot with this housing study. The second part of the question, you know, when does affordable stay affordable? That is a concern. So the Starter Home Project, if you want to look that up, if you haven't looked at that, in New Richmond, the, there's a deed restriction on that house. So you're maximized on the amount of, of profit you can get off of the house, and it keeps it affordable for thirty-one years, I want to say. But yes, you're correct. If we build this affordable housing, let's say we figure out some magic way to continually build a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house. It's only three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand once, and that is a concern, and I haven't really come up with a solution for that yet, but definitely something we think about. Deed restrictions is one of it, but the deed restrictions are still only, you know, you're limited to one, one buyer, one transaction. You know, there's limitations with those, too. So yes, it's definitely a continual concern.
Other questions for Melissa? Any other questions? Thank you, Melissa. It was great. We really appreciate the information.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our next presentation by geologist on karst geology. Brian's going to start us out. Welcome back.
Well, good evening, and good to see everyone again. I just bring you back up to date, kind of where we're at with the solar project. So when we proposed the project earlier this year, we talked about different components that go into the application. One of the things that we are doing, which is unique with this application, is a karst geology survey. Tonight, I'm pleased to present Bob Deaton, who completed that survey and analysis for us. As part of the project, he has developed a karst management plan that he'll discuss at a very high level. The plan will be filed, along with all the other components of our application, when we file the application. So we've completed it, but it'll be filed along with the application when it goes to the Public Service Commission. So I'll do an introduction for Bob, and then I'll have Bob come up and talk a little bit about the work that he does.
So Bob Denton is currently a senior geologist and karst geology subject matter expert with Terracan's Washington DC area office, located in Ashburn, Virginia. Mr. Denton brings over forty years of complex geologic experience in all aspects of engineering geology, with his primary emphasis being karst geology and speleogenesis. His specialties include environmental science, engineering geology, hydrogeology, and karst characterization, remediation, and management. And he is considered a national expert on stormwater management and karst terrains. In his professional role, Mr. Denton specializes in the detection, characterization, and remediation of karst geologic conditions, and performs karst evaluations utilizing a variety of techniques and technologies. As a leader in his field, he has managed Virginia's largest standalone karst survey on behalf of the US Fish and Wildlife Service. He authored Virginia's karst assessment standard and worked with local municipalities to assist them in writing their own karst development ordinances. Mr. Denton has spoken at both national and international karst symposia, was awarded a 2021 Presidential Citation from the Association of Environmental and Engineering Geologists, was the task group leader and primary author of ASTM's Standard Practice for Preliminary Karst Assessments for Land Development, and serves as a mentor for the Geological Society of America's Mentor Program. In January of 2025, Mr. Denton also received the prestigious Robert S. Ladd Award for Standards Development by ASTM International. Mr. Denton is a certified professional geologist, a state-of-Virginia certified professional soil scientist, and a state-of-West Virginia licensed environmental remediation specialist. He is a member of the National Speological Society, the Society of Vertebrate Paleontology, the Association of Environmental and Engineering Geologists, the Geologist Society of America, the American Institute of Professional Geologists, the Virginia Association of Professional Soil Scientists, and ASTM International. Mr. Denton has published numerous articles on subjects including karst, vertebrate paleontology, material science, and has been awarded five US patents for material science and chemical process engineering. So my distinct pleasure to introduce to the board Mr. Bob Denton.
Well, that's one heck of a pedigree. That was a long-winded pedigree. Just to give the board a little bit of an idea of, you know, how I got involved in this, what did I, what made me interested in karst? I started as a caver when I was just a teenager. I wanted to know how these things formed. Why are some caves bigger than others? Why are some caves longer than others? Why do some caves have lots of critters that live in them and others don't? That was one of the things that inspired me to get involved in geology. The other thing was basically just being curious as a youngster. Why is that mountain taller than that one? Why is that valley deeper than this one? It was these questions that I wanted answered. And you know, when I found the answers to them, I found that more questions came about from those answers. And so that's why at the, now at the age of seventy-two, I'm still happily pursuing what I've always done through my career. So anyway, what I wanted to present, they mentioned to do a presentation for the board, and is basically kind of a summary of how we do these karst assessments, how their, you know, the protocol that we actually use. And so that's what I'm going to talk to you about today, I'm going to try to keep it as short and sweet as I possibly can. And, you know, the last board meeting I went to, by the way, was I, we, we were working on a project, which was not approved, in Clinton County, Iowa. And now it was interesting, because the, when the meeting was almost done, the county board asked me, they, they said, well, we want to talk to Mr. Denton again. And I was like, oh, my God, I must have said something wrong. And, and then when I went up and said, you have what, what, you have some questions for me? They said, yes, we would really like you to help us rewrite our karst ordinance. And so that was something that was a kind of a little sidebar that happened with me down there in Clinton County, Iowa. And I was very gratified and really honored that they asked me to help them write their karst ordinance. So anyway, let me make, see if I can advance these slides properly. There we go. So what is karst? What exactly is it? It's a landscape type. A lot of people get mixed up. They think karst is a thing, meaning the rock, or the caves, or the sinkholes. No, it's a type of landscape. It's identified by the presence of sinkhole springs, caves, and this pinnacled irregular soil-rock interface, and that's me standing over the exposed soil-rock interface right there, the site in West Virginia. The karst landscape is the consequence, however, of the presence of soluble bedrock, most commonly carbonate rocks like limestone, dolomite, marble, dolos stone. And karst can also develop in evaporite deposits like gypsum, anhydrite, or halite, which is salt, mostly out west. And one of the things that, that I've run into through my career, when I've worked, I've had developers look at me, but Bob, this site's not karst. There's an area sinkhole nor a cave here. I said, that doesn't matter. It doesn't matter whether there's caves or sinkholes. If your site is underlaid by soluble bedrock, it is karst, period. So that's something important to remember. So where's the karst landscape present? My gosh, it's present all over the, all over the continental United States. You can see the areas where we are here, all that dark blue, kind of east of the dry line, and the east of there, I can't, I don't have a pointer, unfortunately, but the area east of that yellow area, that's the, that's where the climate is very dry, and then to the east, where we are, is where it's more humid. And most of the limestones in the eastern part of the country, except down in Florida or in the coastal plain, down there closer to the Gulf, are hard pelozoic limestones. These limestones are, the cave systems and the karst systems, and these limestones are ancient. They formed a long, long time ago. In many, most cases, millions of years ago. We think the karst system where I live, in the Shenandoah Valley of Virginia, may be as much as seventy to eighty million years old, possibly older. So the limestone itself doesn't dissolve, it dissolves away, but very, very, very slowly. And the karst systems have developed a long time ago. So what forms the sinkholes that we're, that people are concerned about, is the soil moving into that system, and not the rock dissolving away necessarily. That happens very slowly, not in a human lifetime. So something important to keep in mind. So site development, solar site development specifically. These sites can range anywhere from five-hundred to four-thousand acres, depending on the planned micro wattage. Some sites have hundreds, if not thousands, of karst features. Assessments of karst risk is critical for go-no-go decisions, construction planning, environmental planning, and protection. There's no need for an affordable, there is a need for an affordable and efficient karst characterization method for these sites, and that's what we have worked on over the years. That photograph that you see on the screen there, that's a site we worked on in Kentucky, three-thousand acres. It was in the, what's called the Penny Royal Plateau, now down near Bowling Green, and that site had one-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-seven sinkholes in, within three-thousand acres. Just to put it in contrast, the planned Ten Mile Creek site has three identified sinkholes in three-thousand acres. Big difference. So why do we do a karst survey? Well, pretty obviously, you know, the, if, this is, at this site here, you can see these sinkholes that formed near the solar panels, and these, the piles got distorted and twisted. The panels themselves are no longer oriented properly, and these, these, the, these sinkholes formed at a solar site where they did a geotechnical investigation, where they did borings, but they didn't do a karst survey. Bad mistake. So again, just to reiterate, karst terrain is identified as, I also identify by the presence of karst-bearing bedrock underlying the surface, and not just the presence of surface karst features, such as caves, sinkholes, or closed depressions. So the karst survey process, let's get into it here. What do we do? We do a desktop... We do a desktop data review first, field verification second, risk and impact assessment, avoidance, monitoring and minimization measures. What are we, what are we avoiding, monitoring, and minimizing? Impact to the CARST resource. What is the primary CARST resource? It's the aquifer. My three specialties are stormwater management, erosion sediment control, and conservation. What are we conserving and protecting? We're conserv, what is the primary resource in CARST? It's the CARST aquifer. That's what we're protecting. And so again, back to this avoidance, minimization measures, and additional studies in the CARST plan. So why perform the CARST surveys? Construction issues. You can have a regular bedrock-soil interface. You can have sediment erosion control problems. You can have sinkhole development, ephemeral flooding. Regulatory issues. Many planning boards, jurisdictional engineering departments now require CARST surveys for any industrial-commercial development with emphasis on sediment and erosion control during construction. The CARST environment is the habitat of numerous rare threat endangered species regulated by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. One of these, called the Madison Cave Isopod, lives in the Shenandoah Valley. And I've been heavily involved in trying to protect the environment and the habitat of that animal because it lives in the friatic deep aquifer, which is the source of our drinking water. So if we protect its habitat, we protect our drinking water's quality. 28 states have cave and CARST protection acts in place. Wisconsin, I believe, may be one of them. I'm not sure about that. The bottom line is the characteristic CARST features and location patterns are used to focus subsequent subsurface investigations and development planning. That saves both time and money. So first, we do the data review, the desktop data review. What do we look at? We look at cave data, maps of selected CARST features available from the USGS or from state surveys, spring and well locations within 1,000 feet of the proposed site, two-foot contraindable maps, digital elevation models, aerial photographs, topographic maps. And this process reduces the amount of time spent in the field verification and the survey tasks. And something that isn't mentioned here, but the cave data, we get, we've developed, and only because I'm a caver, close relationships with the various cave surveys around the country. Their data is proprietary. They don't like handing out data to people who aren't cavers. So it's nice for me to be a caver because they're willing to trust us and understand that if they tell us where a cave is within a certain area, they'll let us know. And we want to be able to protect those caves. So LiDAR. LiDAR is really, this, this tool has become indispensable to us now. 10 years ago, we had hardly any LiDAR coverage across the country. Now, the entire state of Virginia, the entire state of West Virginia, the entire state of Wisconsin, we have good, high-quality LiDAR. And so we look at these sites. And there you can see, on the left-hand side, that's what it looks like. And then when you look at the LiDAR, ooh, stuff there. Look at that site on the right. Why is the farmer avoiding those wooded areas? Well, I can show you why. I wouldn't want to run my plower tiller up in that area and hit one of those depressions and have my equipment tore up. Now, look at this lovely site. This is a site that I worked on in West Virginia. This is what it looks like without looking at it with LiDAR. When you look at it with LiDAR, it's got 86 sinkholes on 110 acres. Now, what's interesting about this particular site was the, the owner, the fellow who wanted to develop a large lot subdivision here, four to six acre sub-parcels, his civil challenged me, he said, "Bob, you will never get this site approved by the Berkeley County, West Virginia Planning Board." So I sat down with him and I said, "Len, I have an idea. Let's write a management plan for the site for what people can or can't do there." And we did. We wrote a management plan. We told them, you don't, you could cut trees down far enough away from the houses to keep the houses from being damaged, but no more cutting than that. Every sinkhole has to be left in an undisturbed natural condition. You can't run stormwater or right into them. You can run stormwater or the roofs of the houses. And we always do rooftop disconnection, meaning you don't run the water, God forbid you run the water right next to the foundation in CARST. You want to move it away from the foundation. But when we put this plan together, we presented it to the planning board in Berkeley County, and we got unanimous approval, even though his civil told me I would never get it past the planning board. So these are some of the things that just, you have an idea that I've worked on in the past. So field verification is the next thing we do. The desktop review, we see things, but they may not be real. You know, LiDAR is very sensitive. We can see feature the size of a, of a wash bucket, okay? These could be things like tree throws, drain tiles, things like that. They're not necessarily CARST features. So we have to go out there and verify them in the field. Make sure that it really is a feature and not something that, that's fooling us. So we locate and characterize them. We document the CARST features that are necessary for what we do next with the risk assessment. And then the CARST features vary their potential impact on buildings, infrastructure, human health and the environment accordingly, and important to understand what their relative impact is and how best to minimize that risk. Now, this is the standard practice for preliminary CARST terrain assessment. I was very privileged and honored to be the head of the task group that developed this standard practice. It's actually based on this whole protocol that I'm showing you now. And it is actually required by the state of Virginia if you're doing stormwater management in a CARST terrain, CARST terrain area. They require that you follow this protocol. So the next thing we do, and it's, the risk assessment is not included in the preliminary survey method, all right? But this is a way for us to decide or to determine what the level of risk is at a site, all right, from the CARST. And, and it's very important, and it was, this, it's, this is all based on what we call character analysis. We look at these features and we, we give them a ranking, all right? And the ranking is based on different characteristics that they have. And this has been based on decades of empirical observations of sinkholes and other CARST features, primarily sinkholes and depressions. So we have five characters that we use. The first one is the shape of the parapet, the outer edge of the sinkhole. You know, is it even? Is it rough? If it's even, it's reached equilibrium. If it's irregular, it's still growing. So we, so we, we would rank it from even to we'd get a ranking of zero and then give it a numerical ranking that gets higher and higher. Does it have an open throat? An open throat, meaning is there an opening in the base of the sinkhole that leads to the subsurface? This is one of the most important characters that we evaluate because if it does have an open throat, that means water can plunge unfiltered into the aquifer, into the CARST aquifer. And remember, CARST bedrock has no inherent filtration characteristics. It's the soil, the vegetation that helps to filter the, filter the material. So if we have soil and vegetation above the CARST bedrock, the CARST-bedrock, it's filtering out stuff. But if it's an open throat, it goes straight in without any filtration. There is no second, what we call, there is no primary porosity in CARST like there is in sandstone, where you have spaces in between the grains. It's only secondary porosity, meaning solution in large fractures, conduits, openings. It's like a series of pipes, basically, running through the limestone or the dolomite. Soil ravelling. This is a really important feature too because what this is, we're looking here is, is soil being actively falling into the feature. Because that tells us that it's growing. It's getting bigger. It's swallowing the soil, all right? Because like I said before, it's not the limestone dissolving away. It's the soil moving into that system that forms the sinkhole and the depression. And we, as it says there, we distinguish between minor and major ravelling. And we, and this goes to the ranking system. Drainage channel, does it, does the feature have a drainage channel leading towards it or away from it? We like to know this because if it does have a drainage channel, that means it's swallowing a heck of a lot of water. And so these drainage channels are really important. Now, what if it's got a drainage channel leaning away from it? That means that periodically during high-water table conditions, that, that feature's acting like a spring. It's a special type of sinkhole called an estival. Estivals produce water during high, high-water table conditions or high climatic wet periods, and they take water when things are dry. And then finally, vegetation. Why is this important? Well, if we see that a sinkhole or a depression is fully vegetated, has no throat, the parapet is regular in shape, it's stable. It's, we would consider that low risk. However, if there's no vegetation, the vegetation is clearly fallen into the feature with the soil that traveled into there, then we know that there, this thing is still growing and it's got a problem. Now, something to keep in mind, this risk ranking method that we use, it's actually been adopted now by the state of Virginia. It is being adopted by the state of Pennsylvania and the state of Ohio, the geological surveys in those states, to actually evaluate CARST features within their states by their, by their geological surveys. And I'm really honored because we developed this in-house in TERRACON. And, but, but it's, I don't, we don't do these things proprietary and keep them secret. I'm, my work is meant to benefit everyone, the way I look at it. So here's the risk data matrix. You can see the scoring there on the left-hand side. Parapet, throat, ravelling, drainage, vegetated, risk, this whole series of features that we ranked at a particular site, the one you're looking at here in the photograph. Now, what you're seeing is two different things. See the little triangles? Those are surface depressions or sinkholes that are smaller than 10 feet. So we can't represent them easily in a figure like this. Then we have area features, which are ones that are larger than that. Those are the ones that are inside those inward-hatched areas there on that map. Now, this does, this just shows you where they are. But when we risk rank them, now, you can look at it, and a developer can look at this, or a county official, or a county engineer, or a state engineer could look at it and say, "Aha." We can see where the, where the features are very high-risk, meaning that they have a chance to grow or impact things or impact structures, infrastructure that might be installed in the site, whether they're moderate risk, low or very low. One of the things we always recommend to our clients is moderate, high, and very high-risk features need to be either avoided or remediated, one or the other. And there's different ways where you can safely remediate a sinkhole and the, in order to keep it from growing or getting any larger, getting any bigger. And the way you, you know, there's many ways to do it. One of the ways I don't like to do it is to fill it with concrete. And the reason why, the analogy I use is, remember the old story of you cut off the hydris head and three grow in its place? Same thing here. That throat that formed that sinkhole is probably not the only one leading into the subsurface. You fill that sinkhole with concrete and three will grow around it, all right? So what we usually do, what we like to do is what's called the graded filter method, which is you put in, you find the throat, you expose it, you put large, you chalk it with large pieces of rock, and then ever smaller lifts of rock above that, a layer of fabric, a layer of soil above that, positively graded, so the water kind of runs off, away from it. The graded filter is the accepted method now for remediating sinkholes. Now, not to say that we never use grout or concrete. We do, but only in special cases. For instance, if a feature opens up, a sinkhole opens up under a structure or near a structure, you can't do the graded filter. You're obviously not going to knock the structure down in order to put the rock gravel in. So you have to use grout sometimes. Interestingly, they've developed grout now that's permeable. Actually will let water go through it. And that's something that we, that's actually preferable. So the avoidance and minimization measures, believe it or not, these were actually developed to, to protect that little critter I was telling you about, the Madison Cave Isopod that lives in the Shenandoah Valley. It lives in the deep friatic aquifer, which is the source of most of our drinking water. Interestingly enough, we've had jurisdictions that have adopted those AMMs, those avoidance minimization measures, even where the isopod doesn't live. Because if you use them, you're still protecting the aquifer. And so, you know, the, the thing we do is, you know, we rank everything, like it says here, each feature's given a score. Most significant risks and impacts occur during the construction phase, by the way. And then the preferred approach dealing with features is avoid if possible, minimize impact, and remediate. And notice the way we've listed that. Avoidance is the best approach, period. Minimizing the impact is the second best. Remediate if you have to. So what are the benefits of this CARST protocol? The survey protocol provides the client an easy-to-understand assessment of where there is an increased geohazard risk in CARST geology with emphasis on the construction phase, but also for the entire life of the facility. The protocol can guide the developer in avoiding impacts of the CARST aquifer and habitat. It allows a more focused approach in the development of subsequent geotechnical and geophysical subsurface investigations, ultimately saving the client time and money. And the survey protocol satisfies or exceeds the requirements for CARST assessments, which are now required by many engineering reviews who report to jurisdictional planners. That's, we're talking about county engineers. You know, and this is kind of the, something I always like to remind people of is that, you know, once the site is revegetated, especially with native vegetation, it forms an enormous filter for the water going into the subsurface, period. And one of the things I know people have been concerned about is water coming off the panels and eroding areas in between the lines of panels, forming these erosion channels. And this is why it's so important to get, number one, get the site as revegetated as rapidly as possible. And number two, and I know that Xcel uses these, is having panels that, there's a little weather station actually on the site. And if it starts to rain, the panels turn up. So they don't have a large surface to collect the water, which will come running off and then forming this erosion channel, right? It's a really good idea. And actually, most of the larger solar developers now are using that mech, that, that method, which helps to prevent it. But the, it's, the key is having the swiveling panels and getting the site revegetated as quickly as possible. It's really, really important. So anyway, with that, I'm willing to take questions from the board.
Supervisor Rice?
Well, two things. First, we've gotten some emails from, some of the individuals are very concerned about this. They are asking that any research or report that you prepare be available to everyone, that there be full transparency. Is that part of the work product here?
My understanding is that the entire, everything that we've done is going to go together in a package. Right.
All right.
And that will include the preliminary survey, the detailed site investigation, the geotechnical investigation, the karst management plan, which is really important. What's the karst management plan? It's, it's basically what to do, all right, when you're actually building the site out. And here's the thing, why, why do we do these? The, we actually first developed karst management plans, interestingly enough, for pipeline work. We, I've been involved in doing a lot of what are called ACRPs, abandonment, capacity replacement, and improvement projects. These are places where we pull pipe out of the ground that is 60, 70 years old, where you walk down the alignment and you can smell gas. All right? Those pipes have to be replaced. And the thing was, we had to develop some kind of method, so when they were doing the construction work, that they knew what to do. What do you, I mean, if you don't have a karst construction management plan and a sinkhole forms during the process of construction, who do you call? You call the county engineer? You call the fire marshal? I mean, what do you do? The karst management plan tells you exactly what to do. All right? The product, the steps you would take to do that, and how you would go about doing those things. It has specific instructions regarding planning, stormwater management, erosion, especially erosion sediment control, which is really critical in karst areas. One of the things you don't want to do is you don't want to run sediment into the subsurface. You know? That's a really important thing, because, you know, things are carried on that sediment. So, the management plan is critical, and that'll be part of that package that's going to go into submission.
Okay. So, related to this, prior to the Ten Mile Creek proposal, we had many concerned citizens in the county coming to community development concerned about groundwater quality and increasing amounts of nitrates in our soil. So, I, I'm curious if that's, I, I don't believe that's within the scope of what you've been asked to do, but, but you mentioned Clinton, Iowa. I know Iowa has a serious problem.
Yep.
We do have something called the Citizen Groundwater Monitoring Program on our website. And many of the areas that have excessive nitrates just happen to be in the proposed Ten Mile Creek area.
Right.
Do you have any comments about?
Yeah. Do you know the origin of those nitrates?
The evidence that we have so far is that it is, has to do with agriculture.
Yes.
It is predominantly manure spreading.
Fertilizer.
Yep.
Fertilization. And there's also another source of, one of the other things we're very concerned about is increasing levels of coliform bacteria in the aquifer. Whether it's E. coli, although E. coli doesn't, it doesn't, doesn't last, or it doesn't survive very long. And just coliform in general, that, a lot of that comes from livestock. And so, this is why we're starting to try to get to the agricultural community to, you know, keep the cattle from piddling around in the streams, things like that. You know, don't, you know, watch your silage areas. Concentrated feed areas have to be carefully monitored. So, we're, yeah, we're aware of it, and it's, this is not just a problem here, believe me. It's a problem in Virginia, it's a problem in West Virginia. You know, the places that I do a great deal of my work.
Actually, I'd like to ask a question if I may. The process sounds great. Are you able to share any results of surveying the property that Xcel is considering building the?
That's going to go with, am I able to share it now?
Yes.
Oh, yes. The, we, the results of our survey. We found in the desktop review, I believe it was six or seven, what we call SKF, suspect karst features. But remember, again, we can see things with LiDAR that are really small and might not be real. When we actually went out to do the field verification, we found three real features. They're what we call, they're very small, very shallow. What we call subsidence sinks. Subsidence sinks form where you have granular soils, soils that are rich in either silt or sand, which this whole area, especially in that area, it's the soils, as a soil scientist, I'm familiar with these soils. And they're, they're granular. So, they, so they don't tend to form these dramatic sinkholes with vertical walls that suddenly collapse in. It's, it's a slow process. And they're very shallow, they're vegetated. You can see water probably goes into the subsurface there. But, but it, there's no channel going into it or anything like that. There's three of them. Two of them together in a wet area in one of the parcels, and one of them further north in another area that also is wet. Both of those areas are going to be completely avoided. And that's the only ones we found.
Supervisor Shirley?
As part of your report, do you show groundwater table levels?
Did we determine it?
Yeah.
The, the, what, as, the groundwater there is at, is down in the bedrock. And, but we never actually did monitoring wells or drilled deep enough to actually hit the perennial water table. It seems to be pretty deep. You know, there's a water table up in the sediments that it's a perched water table. Now, you don't want to use that for your well, unless you like have a well going dry. The, the actual groundwater, the perennial aquifer, from what I remember, because I looked at some data from the, from the USGS, I think it's at least 120 feet down, if not more. If not more than that. And, and I would personally, if I was doing a well, I would want to go, you know, one of the, one of the problems you have with residential well drillers, they'll drill and they'll say, man, we got a good stream. And they'll do an airlift for an hour, you know, we call it a blow and go. And, and they'll, and you know, and the problem is, they charge by, they, they charge by the foot. All right? So, if they hit water at 200 feet, you know, you're like, well, that's good, that's fine, that's okay. You know, until the drought comes, you know, and that's, I can't tell you how many times I've been called in by people. I'll just give you an example. I worked at the Isaac Walton League in Berkeley County, West Virginia. They had, they had five wells on their property. And four of them were dry, and one of them was making two gallons a minute. That was not going to be enough to support their summer affairs. Well, what happened was, I, I decided to look at, at good, sustainable wells in that area. I got records from the Health Department in Berkeley County. Every well I found that was sustainable was over 500 feet deep. So, I told Isaac Walton League, and I told my driller, I said, we're going to go down at least 500 feet. He was like, what? I said, we're going down 500 feet. And so, we drilled down, at 585 feet, we hit the, an air rotary that you use for drilling a well is, has a 20-foot-high boom. And we hit the seam, the water shot up twice the height of the boom, about 40 feet in the air. My driller's like, oh, that's making 100 gallons a minute. I said, well, yeah, maybe. Let's airlift it for five, six hours. He's like, what? I said, I want to calm it down. All right? And so, we did. We airlifted it for six hours, and it calmed down to 20 gallons a minute. That was in 2004, and it's never made less than 20 gallons a minute ever since then. So, you know, this is why I always warn people. I said, be careful. You know, be careful, because, you know, you might want to get yourself a decent hydrologist or consultant if you're thinking about doing a good well, you know, so.
Supervisor Reimberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, thank you for coming. One of the, you've touched on some of this, and then if you could reiterate some of it on the mitigation side of things. One of, one of the concerns is that the pounding of the beams will create another crack, let's say, or, and I think you spoke a little bit, but if you could expound on that a little bit more. And then, and then, as far as mitigating, I believe there's different sizes of I-beams? And maybe that's for Xcel as to which ones they're going to use.
Different sizes of the, of the piles.
Of the post, of the post. And how far down it goes as far as the mitigation? Is there a post that goes down and expand if you want to keep it shallow? Maybe that's more for Xcel, but is that one of the mitigation features because of some of the concerns that it it goes down so far?
I think, I mean, my understanding is the embedment is going to be somewhere from between nine to 15 feet. They had, I mean, I just looked at all the borings, the geotechnical borings. I actually did it today, just to refresh my memory. And at, there was no rock, okay, per se, bedrock, something you could call rock, hard rock, at less than 20 feet below the surface. What, what there was in some areas, in many areas, they drilled down and didn't hit anything. No, no rock at all, all right, down to 20 feet. What I did notice was a lot of areas, the dolostone, the periodusian dolomite, the karst-forming unit in the area. You've got to remember, it has this overburden over the top with this glacial till. It's like a sponge. It absorbs water. And what happens is that water has worked on that rock and decomposed it. It's highly weathered. So, it's barely rock anymore. All right? When you bring it up, you can actually bring it up in the auger, and it, it kind of looks like rock, but you can break it up with your hands. You know what I mean? So, it's, it's highly weathered material. The, the thing is, is that I don't think they're ever going to reach a depth where actually that would happen. And if you're in good, solid periodusian stone, it's, it's, that's, that, I mean, that, I, I looked up some of the stats on that, on that stuff. It's got an unconfined compression strength, starting at 8,000 pounds per square inch. I mean, it's, it's not just going to, you know, suddenly fracture. You've got to remember, we're not driving these piles into rock, okay? You're drilling a hole. Then the pile goes in, and then the hole gets backfilled. And if, you know, now, here, it's doubtful you'll have this situation, but in Virginia, I worked on one field where we had to be in close contact with the driller when they were drilling the holes for the pip, for the piles. And they would tell me, they'd say, Bob, we hit a, we hit a void around four feet down in the rock. And I said, well, you're going to have to put bentonite and grout in there, bentonite and concrete, seal it off, you know? So, that's way, you know, that's what we do, but it's not, you know, I don't think you're going to run into that situation here personally.
Supervisor Connor?
Just had a few questions with, so, hearing from what you said, it sounds like you did a extensive boring study of the 3,000 acres?
They did quite a few, yeah. It was, I can't remember how many geotechnical borings Terracan did. I, I thought it was over 30.
Over 30 and 3,000 acres, so not very many then.
But you'd have to do, I would want to do, when, in the detailed investigation, we call the detailed site investigation, we'd actually end up doing more, and also geophysics. You know, where you can look into the ground.
So, then we'd be under the assumption that there'll be a further boring study yet to come?
There may be, yes.
Maybe?
Yeah.
Okay. With, with that, did, on the 30, you said you did 30 boring so far?
I think it was upwards of 30, yeah.
And out of those, you found none with any voids, or none with any pit of dolomite or any?
Well, in order to get voids, you have to have a solid material for the void to form in, you know what I mean? And that, that's the problem, where they, the few where they went deep enough to actually cornd to the rock, that was for the substation, and there was, it was just solid rock. There was no voids at all.
Okay. With, with that in mind, if you further the study and you said that if you run into ones where there are voids or anything, that those, those would be, and, you know, in prudence, you'd treat those with dolomite or other methods to ensure that we don't have a direct?
I mean, if they actually drill for a pile, the, the method we use, and, and it's unlikely to happen here, but we've used it in Virginia and West Virginia, is the driller can, they can detect if there's a void when they're drilling the hole for the pile. So, what you do is, the hole is slightly oversized, so the pile goes in, seat, it gets seated, and then you backfill it with a mixture of grout, which is a, a basically a high slump concrete mixed with bentonite, which is a clay that expands when it gets wet. And that will seal off the void, essentially is what it does. I mean, that's what you want to do. You don't want, you don't want anything getting into the system, into the karst system. A lot of cases, these voids are blind, what we call blind. They don't, you know, they're little pockets. We get, they're pocket karst, it's called sometimes. But we don't want to take the chance. It might lead into, just because it's too small for a human to get through doesn't mean it's not too small for liquid to get through or other, other substances, so.
Well, and the hard part with it also is knowing the substructure, that because you're in a glacial till area, the, the formations and things that are down underneath there is, is difficult at best to predict how deep everything is. So, again, with, are you, the LiDAR can tell you some things, but might, I guess the question is, how do you ensure as they're doing this? Or is it kind of just touch and go if they're drilling and they find a hole? Or, or how do we, how do we make this as safe as possible?
We got enough information from the boring study, and also just, just myself knowing the characteristics of the periodusian, periodusian. The limestone is actually flat-batted. All right? Or the dolostone. It's flat-batted. We saw more irregularity, interestingly enough, in the Ansel Group sandstone, the St. Peter's sandstone that sits in the higher elevation areas above the periodusian, which is interesting. It was something I didn't expect, because usually we see in the carbonate rock in a regular bedrock surface, all right? But oddly, we saw it in the sandstone. And it's probably because it's on the slightly higher elevations of the area, and just the, again, that, that till that sits on top of this stuff, it's like a sponge. And it, and it soaks up the water, and the water goes down and hits the rock and starts to decompose it. It weathers it, basically. But, but in the borings, mostly what I saw was a tremendous amount of weathered rock. I mean, it was, the stuff was barely even classifiable as rock anymore. You know? It was, it was, it's not soil, but it's not rock either. It's, it's, we call it, it's, I, we used to simply call it weathered rock. Now, the, people will come up with it, you know, they always, if you've got a word or a term that has two words in it, and then they had to come up with one, intermediate geo materials. You know? But it's still the same thing. It still means the same thing. It's, it's weathered rock. Okay? And that's mostly what you have here, and that layer of weathered rock is fairly thick. It can be up to 15, 20 feet thick before you got, actually get into competent bedrock. And only, I think, comp, actual competent hard bedrock was only hit in, and I don't have my numbers in front of me right now, unfortunately, but it was only hit in like maybe three or four of the borings, and that was it. And it was basically, two of them were where they did the substation, and they drilled deep there, because substations have heavy equipment. You know, everything in the substation is relatively heavy. And so, we have loads like that. You have to be able to support those loads. And so, that's why they drilled deep, and then they actually did rock cornd. They actually cornd into the bedrock. And we didn't, in that bedrock, we didn't see any voids at all. So, you know, but it's, it's, it's hit and miss when it comes to that. I mean, especially in these units, in these formations. There's usually, one of the ways you can judge how close the rock, the bedrock, the karst-forming bedrock is to the surface, and how well-developed or the level of karst development in it is, do you have caves? Okay? Because if you have caves, there's an opening going to the surface that goes down into a chamber. All right? That's big enough to have allowed that, of that entrance to form. There are caves in St. Craig County, all right? But they're more in the central part and the eastern part of the county is where they are. There's no caves over here in this part of the county at all. And that's, that's a, that's a symptomatic thing. If you don't have caves, the, the development of the karst has its own character, in a sense. So, and it's a little bit different. It's probably lower risk in general.
So, just one last thing on this. And I guess one of the biggest concerns that we have on the water issues is, and ensuring that this is taken both very seriously and that we're doing due diligence to ensure is that this area is the waters that are subsurface in that area are feeding aquifers that reach to several municipalities. And a, something that negative, a negative impact that happens there could impact as many as 60,000 residents in St. Craig County. So, we have to take it very seriously, and we need to know that the types of things that you're doing has due diligence to ensure that this doesn't become an obstacle for us for the future.
Yeah. I don't want to be repetitive. But like I said before, my primary, one of the main parts of my job is to protect the karst resource. And the karst resource is the aquifer. So, that's the only thing I can tell you, to assure you that we do our due diligence. And by the way, in all my entire career, I have never had been sued or had a claim filed against me for not doing good work. And that's been a career that's lasted 40 years.
Supervisor Ron?
Figured this out. Am I on? Dr. Denton, it is Dr. Denton?
No.
No. Mr. Denton?
Don't insult me.
You use the term management plan, and I'm, and I'm curious. I mean, the process you described for assessment for the build is quite impressive.
Right.
And, and I'm guessing, and maybe you can confirm, that even with technologies as impressive as LiDAR, you probably can't foresee everything.
No.
And so, I guess my question really is, how is it, how important is it for a project like this to not only involve you in the build of the project, but to have you back periodically, every three years, every five years, to see what you didn't foresee, to see what changed, as Supervisor Reimberg said, in, as a consequence of the build? And it's, it's an evolving ecosystem.
We addressed that in, in the, believe it or not, the very last section of the karst construction management plan is O and M, operations and maintenance. And that's, it establishes a schedule for resurveying the site. In some cases, it's two, every, it's two years, four years, eight years like that. And we even have been asked by some clients in some jurisdictions to put in a section regarding decommissioning. How do you go in and decommission the site? Because, you know, these are long-term leases, but eventually the site will be decommissioned. I'll be long-dead by then, but we, we want to make sure that it's decommissioned properly. But yeah, we, we, that's part of the, the, it's, it's a little bit misleading, because the, the full name of the, of the plans is the KCMP, Karst Construction Management Plan. All right? But it deals with more than just construction. It actually deals with the life of the facility. That's the O and M section, and then in some cases, decommissioning.
Supervisor Ann Summerin?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Denton, you were talking about the process that would be involved here, so that there would be a, a hole would be drilled, and then in that hole, when they, when they put the beam in, I-beam typically, whatever, they would put a mixture of dolomite and concrete in there to hold it in place?
If it's drilled into rock, yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, the, the piles just simply, if they're embedded in soil, the piles are just driven in, you know?
Okay. Well, and that, that brings my question, because you said they wouldn't be driven in. Xcel said they would be driven in, so I'm just wondering which is right and who's telling the truth. So, you know?
The, in soil, they get drilled, they get pounded.
They get pounded in. And, and that's, that's a concern of, of many people here. Will that pounding, will that vibration, will that crack the, the ground, the, the soil, the rocks, whatever is the number of it?
Crack the route, the rock that's over twenty feet below?
Yeah.
No.
It will not?
No.
Okay. And then that's a guarantee. So this won't, won't change. What I am concerned about is decommissioning. You know, this is not a forever thing. Nothing is. And so somehow these have to be pulled out, these ones that have the spent glob on, you know, something has to happen to that and that's my concern for the question, you know? So-
How will it be decommissioned?
Yep.
The main is if the pile is a, is a soil pile, it just gets backfilled with soil, site soil?
Pulled out the first.
Yeah. It's pulled out and, and the hole gets backfilled with soil. A lot of times the hole just spontaneously collapses, but you want to make sure that it's, it's backfilled and compacted. You don't want, want to leave it up to the chance that it might settle. If it's drilled, you know, if you had to drill a hole and then had to set the pile in there, once the pile is removed, then that drilled portion that went into rock gets filled with, with grout mixed with bentonite and concrete, basically sealed off.
And, and that process, I'm hoping then is, is noted in, in the decommissioning portion of the contract, right? Or-
It'll be in the karst. And, and it would be, it would be included in the, the decommission will be included in that section of the karst plan.
Okay. So just again, so some are going to be driven in, the ones that hit rock have to be drilled in.
Yeah. You got to remember, when you're going, when you're driving a pile, especially like that into soil.
Yeah.
It, the vibrations don't propagate very far. That soil acts as a damper. It's a tremendous damper, you know? The, it would be like, the easiest way I can explain it without getting into the, into the physics of it, imagine, you know how you can take pool balls and if you, if you line them up and make them touch each other? You hit one on the end and the, the one on the other and it'll bounce out, right?
Yeah.
Put, put, puts pieces of felt in between the pool balls and do the same thing. The one on the end will bounce out, but it'll only bounce out a little ways. It won't bounce out far. That's the damping effect, okay? That's what happens. The soil has a damping effect. So the vibrations from pounding the pile in, in soil can't propagate, if anything, they'll propagate laterally, out to the side, not necessarily directly below, okay? But again, that's, that's, that's get out of my pay grade as far as the physics of it.
It's interesting you mention that because my own experience, I live in Baldwin. Baldwin doesn't have any kind of soil that has clay this far down, so nothing gets through it. But so they were doing some street work two blocks away from me. And when they, and they didn't, they used the, the excavator, the, the camped the soil under the sewer pipe they were pouring in, and I could feel it in my house and two houses away from me, it brought the basement wall in. So when, when you say you won't feel, you know, that, that doesn't go, doesn't transfer-
Well, they were, but what, what were they hitting the, the HOGMS bucket on?
They, they were just hitting it on the soil.
Okay.
Yeah. On the soil, down at the bottom. They were about between twelve and fifteen feet deep.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I could feel that two blocks away in my house.
Wow.
Yeah. So when, when you say that, it makes, it makes, yeah, it makes me question that, if you see what I mean.
That's, I mean, again, it, for it to be propagating, I mean, to feel it two blocks away, there had to be some, something, you know, it's interesting, I, we were working on a cave and there was, they were blasting for a roadway, Route 11, what we call it the Valley Pike, only five, six hundred yards away. And when they, when they would hit the dynamite, we, we, it sounded like somebody had a ball peen hammer and they were hitting the wall of the cave with a ball peen hammer, sounded like a ping. Yet when they blasted in a quarry that was two miles away, but it was along the strike of the bedrock, meaning the bedrock dips and strikes, okay? So the dip of the rock is like this and the strike is going perpendicular to the dip. That quarry was, was down the strike from us. And when they would do a shot in the quarry, it made the, the cave shake, okay? It was two miles away. So a lot has to do with the geology, all right? You know what I mean? See what I'm driving at? And because I don't know what was going on there as far as where your house is located and what the geology is there, I can't really speak to it. That's the thing. You know, why you felt it or why the wall fell in on that basement.
Yeah. It's just that, you know, that's what I'm concerned about for the people who live around there.
No, I understand.
Other questions? All right. Thank you so much. This was incredibly informative and we really appreciate it. It was great information.
I hope I didn't yak on too long for you.
No, it was great.
All right. And you're very welcome and I really am happy to be able to have presented to you. It's an honor.
All right. We're going to move on to our agenda. I believe the next up is our county administrators' report. The report is in the packet. A lot of good information in there. I wrote it, so I hope so. But if you have any questions on anything that's in there, there wasn't any one particular thing that I needed to point out to you, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those. As far as the financials, what I would say is looking at 2025, I think a lot of the departments are going to be closer to budget than maybe in previous years. So the, the gap is going to be smaller. There'll probably be a few that are over as we've had in the past, but overall, I think we'll be okay. No, no questions on the county administrators' report? All right. Thank you.
Okay. Quick roll call update. Supervisor Adams has joined us. Hope you had a good trip. Supervisor Hanson needed to leave, so he has left. And we're still not sure what the status is of Supervisor Carlson. I believe he's logged in, but he's not on the voting system, but not logged in on teams. So we'd like to hear from him if he's listening. Okay. We're going to move on to our business items. The first item is a resolution adopting the St. Croix County 2026 through 2030 outdoor recreation plan. I believe that would be community development? Do we have a motion?
I'd move to the resolution adopting the St. Croix County 2026 to 2030 outdoor recreation plan.
And do we have a second? Second Supervisor Vance Summerin. Who would like to describe this wonderful plan?
I can start with it, but I for sure would like to get the support of our community development director. I really want to take time to thank all of the staff in community development that put forth a tremendous effort in the updating and, and bringing a lot of things forward, looking at different budget alternatives for how to, and, and different emphasis in different areas to try to push us, push St. Croix County as, in a really good position for the future for our, our county parks and, and rec plan. So go ahead, please.
Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. So the last time that the county's outdoor rec plan, or corp as I call it, was amended was in 2022, when the Eckert-Blufflin's master plan was originally adopted the first time. And this plan is essential for us to be able to apply for grants. It is really the long-term vision of the county board for how you want to see improvements handled throughout the county park system. And so part of this process, it's been a long process that staff have been working on because we took and kicked off with a survey and we made it available throughout all of our parks and that throughout the whole summer. We had a fairly good response rate of around 161 survey responses, then, or 162. And then we also held a, a open house over in Baldwin. Unfortunately, we didn't get a lot of turnout for that event, but, and that, again, it was another attempt for us to get the public's input. We also provided a notice to all the municipal clerks and the towns and that, so that they could provide feedback on that survey. And to wrap it up, basically the whole plan, we sat down with our park staff, identified the needs in our parks, the areas in that for improvement, and that was what we kind of amended the plan to be. When we look at, oh, go up one more time there. Okay. And so we had some pointed questions in that survey in regards to the new park of Eckert-Blufflin's and the main priorities in that for Eckert and throughout all of our park system were a lot of the passive recreational uses, so the trails and just improving our overall facilities. And so that's really the guiding principles that we used and we implemented in this amended plan. And that's about what I've got for it. Any questions?
Questions? I'll see none. I just want to say, I want to commend you, Jason, and your staff and the community development department. Obviously, there was a tremendous amount of work that went into this. I thought it was really well done and I, I commend you and your staff and the committee for putting this together.
Thank you.
We have a, unless anybody else has a questions, we have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution that approves the plan in a second. And any other discussion? I believe that we're ready to vote. Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jason. All right. Our next and last business item, resolution amending the rules of the board of supervisors. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 53, amending the rules of the board of supervisors.
Motion to approve by Supervisor Burning. Do we have a second? Supervisor Shirley. Who would like to, Supervisor Burning? Thank you.
Yeah. So we took up several rule changes. One of them was virtual attendance needs to be through audio and visual means. So anyone that's attending needs to be on camera for the entirety of the meeting. Attending virtually needs to be there visually. And then county clerk's correspondence was taken out and if she has, or if the county clerk has any, we'll bring that to the chair prior to, so it can get put on the agenda. That way it's not consistently through the last how many years. And then we had the, making it so that in the rules, the chair is required to ask if there's any consent to end, agenda items to be pulled. And then, yeah, that was, that was pretty much it. What's, what's this last one? Sorry, that's, oh, keep the camera on for the entirety of the meeting, which is somewhat covered in the first part. So that's it.
Questions? Supervisor Rice?
Yeah, I was, I was hoping that in some way we could address the issue when someone has a, a medical issue, such as the foot surgery I had last year that required that I get taxi rides and other things because I could not drive for a total of sixteen weeks. So I don't know if that's something that we could ask the committee to take up. It was a short-term temporary thing. I'm not thinking that it would be a long-term thing, but, you know, we certainly have the ability now for people to attend virtually. There is not an easy way for us to predict when meetings are going to be done, so arranging transportation when someone can't drive. I'm thinking if someone were to have surgery requiring some convalescence for a period of time, that might accommodate. So it's a request that the committee take that up.
Yeah, I think if they have some unusual circumstances like that, that we can make some exceptions along the way. I don't know that we need to have anything formal in the board rules, but certainly we need to be flexible to accommodate those types of situations to the extent that we can. I'm not sure that helps, but-
Would the committee agree to that? Because the fact that we're not seating someone tonight for a position tells me that there's a certain amount of judgment that is being used. I just want to make sure that every supervisor that is able to attend can attend even if they have, something as, as minor as a surgery, meaning that they can't drive.
Is the, Mr. Chair's, the supervisor making, requesting an amendment to this? Or is it a future agenda item?
It's, it's really a request for a future agenda item. So we're jumping a little bit ahead on the agenda, but, so you were not requesting an amendment, correct? Correct. Okay, just to clarify. Okay. Other questions? Any discussion on the motion to approve the changes in the board rules? Okay. I guess we're ready to vote on the motion to approve the resolution amending the rules of the board of supervisors. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Now we're going to move on to requests for future agenda items. Are there any requests? Supervisor Shirley?
In the last couple of weeks, I got a copy of a postcard that was sent out by HHS and on the very end of it, it has that the communication was paid for by Pfizer. So I would like the administration committee to get some information on how funds are coming in to the county from that.
Okay. Got it down. Supervisor Counter?
Have one to address to the admin committee for when we have a filling of positions for people that have stepped away from their position on the county board, after reading through the bylaws, it's to consider a bylaw change to add notice to the district, that district's area municipal clerks to notice on, for vacant board positions in the bylaw. We currently, it is the, they do have the listing for the president, village presidents and, and those, but it does not go to the clerk. Now, in our instance for this, it was done fortunately on our behalf, that our clerk had diligently already did it that way, which is awesome, but I think that that should be a consideration, so because-
I'm going to raise a point of order. Can we have it where it goes on the agenda and then it's agendted?
That's it. That's all I'm asking for.
Instead of discussing it right now.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other future agenda requests? Supervisor Shirley?
One more. When we're looking at appointments, whether it's filling seats or we're looking at committees, I would like to have it looked at on, if we could have all of the documentation that was applied for by all of the members that have applied, so that we can make a better in- better informed decision.
Other requests? All right, seeing none, I guess we don't need, we can just bypass the county clerk's report now. How about that? Any announcements? No holiday announcements? No holiday? Okay. All right. Well, on that, I, I'll just say that I hope everyone has a enjoyable holiday and a safe travels if you're traveling. And we will reconvene as a board next year, first week of January. Otherwise, have a wonderful evening. It is 6:51 and we are adjourned.